Educating, Informing, Serving. FEC TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Okay, hi everyone. Welcome. It's Tuesday, March 17th, 2020. It's 6:03. We're meeting in the Lower Theater, Rockingham Town Hall for the regular Rockingham Select Board meeting. We first need to call to order the meeting of the Rockingham Board of Liquor Commissioners. Tonight we have 16 applications. The first one, Halliday's Flowers and Gifts Liquor License, 802 Spirits. Number two, Athens Pizza House, First Class, number 1846. Number three, Polish American Club, First Class, 1865. Polish American Club, Third Class, 1865. PK's Irish Pub, Third Class, 9973. PK's Irish Pub Caterer's License, 9973. Wellfleet Inc., Second Class, 4984. Leslie's The Tavern at Rockingham, Third Class, 1858. Leslie's The Tavern at Rockingham, Outside Consumption, 1858. Leslie's The Tavern at Rockingham, First Class, 1858. James Petro LLC, Second Class, 8420. Popolo, Third Class, 7830. Popolo Caterer, 7830. Popolo First Class, 7830. Popolo Outside Consumption, 7830. Any questions or concerns?
No, I didn't notice anything in there from anyone that would prohibit the issue of the licenses. So I'm going to make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we issue the licenses for the mentioned organizations that have referenced the applications here tonight, 1 through 16, as you stated.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor would signify by saying aye. Voice of vote, please.
Peter, aye.
Susan, aye.
Ben, aye.
Gaetano, aye.
Stefan, aye.
Motion passes. We will adjourn as a meeting of the Rockingham Board of Liquor Commissioners. It is now 6:05. We will begin the regular meeting of the Rockingham Select Board. Call the meeting to order. Are there any additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and/or pressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting?
I actually have some deletions or postponements in light of the coronavirus situation. We're going, I'm proposing that we delete from this agenda, we will deal with it in the future, item 2C, the sidewalk evaluation. Item 3, Fire Equipment Committee update, we can do that in the future or by email. Finance Office Tax Sale Discussion, I have an email I can update and send to you. And then under appointments, I'd like to just do a confirming appointment of the Emergency Management Director and then discuss the Recreation Committee under appointments. And then suggesting that we postpone Policies and Procedures, which is number 6. Attorney Ray Masuko's not able to be here today, so we'll postpone item number 7 also.
Where was the Emergency Management?
It's not listed here, but...
You want to just do that?
Under appointments, please.
Add it?
Yes.
And was there anything for number 3? Were we adding something?
Um...
Tonight?
No.
Okay.
No, we weren't. I mean, I can give you information on it if you like, but...
Okay.
We're just, I was just trying to just do essential items tonight.
Did you guys hear all of that?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving right along. To approve the minutes of March 3rd, 2020, special meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I most approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the minutes, March 3rd. All those in favor would signify by saying aye, please.
Peter, aye.
Susan, aye.
Ben, aye.
Gaetano, aye.
Stefan, aye.
Motion passes, approve the minutes. Are there any public comments on items not on the agenda? People will get three minutes per person. Managers report.
Okay, a few things. Obviously, the big news is the COVID-19 situation, which is changing daily. The public should check our website. A summary of the news today is that Town Hall is closed as of today. You can still call us. We have our regular numbers forwarded to our cell phones, so people can call us, you can email us, you can access land records online. The link for that is on our website, and I believe it's on the signs as of today. The licenses for, the deadline for dog licenses is normally April 1st. We're postponing that to May 1st. The clerk asked me to read this. Town Clerk's Office has extended the deadline for dog license renewals to May 1, 2020. You may mail in the renewal fee, and we can mail you the tag if you wish. You may call the office for information at 463-4336. We are hoping this will help all resident dog owners and prevent some of the spread. Late fees are waived until June 1st. And the rabies clinic that was planned for this coming Saturday has been canceled. The recycling center will be open tomorrow. It's going to be different so that we can minimize the folks being together. The swap shop will be closed, so you won't be able to access it. You'll come in your car, you won't be able to get out of your car except to take out the recyclables and the garbage and put them in the compacters like you normally do. But please be prepared to be patient, as it'll be one at a time, and it'll just be safer for everyone. So just plan to be patient. We are going to put up town bulletin boards at areas outside of the village so that people who don't have easy internet access will be able to know what's going on. And those are going to be at Saxon's River by the store. We're going to do one in Cambridge Port by the old store, and Lower Bartonsville, specific location to follow, and the Park and Ride at Exit 6. So the parking ride that's by the SEBT office, the current office. So what we'll do is we'll post all of our notices there as well as in town, so that folks can know what's going on. Businesses are obviously a big concern. BDCC is taking charge of helping businesses, and they've already, they should be receiving information through the chamber. Gary Fox is coordinating that. Do you have anything to add, Gary? Okay.
Well, had our first phone meeting today with folks from around the state. Thirty people expressing concerns, what's done so far to access the assistance from Agency Commerce, Fee Development. And BDCC's compiling those, and we'll have a call on Thursday afternoon with action steps, next steps, and on Friday, a business forum. So every single business that wants to be in touch, to ask questions, to be able to access, whether it's the unemployment benefits for employees that are laid off, or the cash flow assistance for lack of revenues for business, they can call in on Friday afternoon and participate in that. And we'll have a link Thursday afternoon that we'll be able to post on the website.
Okay, great. And then, obviously, we're going to try to limit town meetings to what's absolutely necessary, and if we can do them remotely, we will. But right now, we're obviously doing it in person. And then, last but not least, volunteers. We've had a lot of calls from people wanting to help, which is wonderful. So we encourage that. The town won't be coordinating that. Greater False Connections, Gary had another call on this, is Greater False Connections the place, the folks who'll be coordinating, volunteers?
So there's a few groups involved with the volunteers. One is the Vermont Council on Rural Development, the Resiliency Task Force that came out of that, is spearheading some of the data and the volunteer recruitment. Greater False Connections has a lot of data and outreach of various groups and vulnerable populations. So they'll be coordinating all of the outreach for that aspect. And they're actually, they're on the phone right now designing how that program's going to work. But it is in motion, in place, whether it's food, emotional support, any types of help that people, you know, staying at home, vulnerable populations, or not, people has not been able to go out, any types of support. They're putting together a program to help out with that.
Okay, great. And yeah, so do volunteer if you're able to. And if you hear any rumors, please don't assume that they're true. One of the things we want to do on our website is help people just be able to sort through the real stuff and the false stuff. So that is what I have for today.
Thank you. Did you mention that the library and the rec center are closed?
No, the library closed yesterday, and the rec center is on the same schedule as the schools. So it also closed yesterday, and the movie theater had its last movie for a little while yesterday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's get down, we'll get started on number one. Economic development, area is here, consider application for the USDA grant for the train station. Quite a bit of information in our packets here.
And I can just give a summary, and then Gary, you can add anything if you need to. But this is an application for a grant, it's due March 31st, which is why it stayed on the agenda. And it is for funding to do an initial analysis of the train station, and it is in the amount that was approved by town meeting. So we recommend approval.
Entertained a motion?
I just, I have one adjustment on the project budget summary. The pre-architecture work, the rural business development grant funds should be $11,500, not $11,000.
Okay, what page is that on?
I'm sorry, that's page 7, the grant application.
Okay.
And so that total project, the USDA funds comes out to $12,500, and the total project cost comes out to $27,100. And in the motion, we should also indicate that $12,500 matching funds from the article at town meeting.
Do you want to propose a suggested motion? I don't have one prepared for them.
Sure, just a friendly amendment that we include that the $12,500 town matching funds is approved at town meeting.
Okay, so they moved to approve the application with $12,500 in town matching funds?
Yes.
Okay, so that can be the motion.
I move to approve the motion, I'm going to state it.
What was the article number? Is that important?
I don't think so.
Article 13.
Oh, good. Okay, in article 13.
I'll back up the motion, let me get a question.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, discussion. Yes, Peter?
The hundred town match, is that what we're voting on, or is that in addition to the $12,500 that was already voted at town meeting?
It's the same money.
So we're not, we're not putting the town in at $25,000?
No, absolutely not, nope. Just the, we're just leveraging the funds that were voted on at town meeting to have more money in the work.
Thank you, just clarifying, thank you.
Good question.
Any other questions? Motion's been made and seconded. If all those in favor would signify by saying aye.
Peter Roland, aye.
Susan Hammond, aye.
Ben, aye.
Gaetano, aye.
Stefan, aye.
Motion passes to approve application for funding USDA rural business matching funds from Article 13 to $12,500. Number two, Public Works, Everett is here, A pertains to myself, I will recuse myself from this discussion.
Okay, so this is a access permit you have in your packet. It's one driveway off of Grizzle Drive that would connect two new parcels. And Everett's looked at it, and Chuck has looked at it, and...
So toward the back, right, you'll see actually the sketch, I think it's kind of hard, if you got a black and white one, if you got it in color, you'll probably read it all right. I print off black and white, but you'll see, well, actually originally they were going to come off, I think it was, yeah, Wall Street. That was a tough access. You know, I looked at it, I was nervous about, you know, the town pushing snow against the edge, and these guys trying to make it all the way up to it, it would've been tough. And Tom called, looked at it with Gaetano, came up with another option of coming off just before the pump station on Grizzle Drive. So as you're going up, you're kind of trying to ninety it in as much as you can, and then kind of head down over. Normally, this is probably the first one I've done, a shared driveway, it's not a normal thing. Texted, I haven't had a chance to catch up to Chuck on that. I assume there are probably two owners who'd eventually worked together on some type of driveway agreement, you know, shared agreement. In this case, I would recommend it, because really, I don't think we want to see two driveways heading down over the hill there. So the conditions I put in there, you'll see on the second, the last page. For what, I can read through them all, unless you've already looked at them. Or any questions on any of them?
I have a question.
Yeah?
As soon as I look over there and own that property that he's discussing, I guess the concern I have, I know, or I think there's still a sewer or drain at the bottom of Wall Street. Is this, is the potential in a heavy rainstorm, or one or two days of rain, of flooding conditions that's further down the hill? I know there's a old stream bed that's probably dried up that would drain into and go down there. And I, I'm just, that's all my concern, is that we've had those problems on Wall Street before, High Hill, I'm just prepared to avoid that situation by allowing this permit.
Yeah, no, most of Wall Street is, most of that's from the stream coming down the hill. And actually, it's when a, one of the side banks collapses, and then it tries to plug up that inlet, which is similar to what you've seen, just if you drove through it, Peter, and you saw it on the way into Saxon's River, this, I think happened Friday, late Friday, or sometime Friday, maybe it was Saturday. Every year, there's a bank that collapses on the left side just before you get in the Saxon's River. And it's major dollars trying to invest that. So our best thing at this point, we're going to keep cleaning it out, but we'll probably eventually put in a larger culvert there to solve that. But it's similar to that on Height Hill, so it's, this is not going to affect that. You know, they'll have to have a stable driveway going down through there, you know, and, you know, that, you know, they'll have a couple culverts, I'm sure, you know. What we're looking at is just the access itself, is all we can do here. And that'll, the rest of it will be up to planning zoning as they approve the development of the lots as they get further along.
Yeah, my concern would be that we'd be looking at, you know, town pays up some expense down the road if there, if a situation did occur, that we had to repair something there, that shouldn't be on the town.
Right.
Right, that makes sense, and so that's something that would be done during the planning, or the application, the development application process.
Right. And they'll have to, you know, anything steep, I'm sure they'll be looking at riprapping some of the, if they got some ditch lines that are fairly steep going down the hill, you know, before it flattens out. That's, my recommendation would be that.
Yeah, I'll do it, yeah.
From the audience here, we don't plan on coming anywhere near Wall Street. Nothing will be changed. This is just for access, basically level access to the two existing parcels from up above, so we wouldn't, in the next phase, we would maintain not sending any more runoff down, downhill.
Right, but that'll be further reviewed in the, in the development review.
Just to clarify.
Yeah, that's helpful.
This is just access.
And one other thing, Pete, drainage. So we want to make sure that we're leaving a berm there, so in other words, it's going to kind of go up a little bit before he, and before he heads down the hill, so that, so that he's not creating a pathway or a sluice way for drainage from Grizzle Drive to actually all of a sudden short-circuit right down over the hill.
Right.
That would create some big problems.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay. All right, I'll just do this. Or do you want to ask for...
I'll make the motion to approve the access permit for Gaetano and Winestock with the conditions specified.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second with Peter.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Peter, aye.
Susan, aye.
Ben, aye.
Stefan, aye.
Okay, so the motion is four to zero, approved with Putigano abstaining. Okay, so now you're back, so the chair's back. So the next item is right-of-way bid responses, and so what this is for, is for surveying the town's right-of-way. It's very difficult when we don't know exactly where the property of roads are, property lines are. Many times, they're not the typical two rods, so we put it out to bid, got two bids. Everett, do you want to explain?
Sure. Prior to me putting this out to bid, I can look through the purchase policy, and we almost could've gone with the engineering/architectural exception and pushed this through that way, you know, using the local guy here, Devenardo. But I didn't want to do that, because you've got a couple other surveyors, locals, so I didn't want to just pinpoint it to one direction. So we put it out to bid, right, Mike got this ready, got it put out to bid. And as far as I actually get, you know, the times the way they are now, and surveyors are in tough demand trying to get anybody to do a survey these days, but we did receive two. We got Devenardo Associates and DuBois &amp; King. So Devenardo, and you can't really add these up, I did, just for comparison, because these are adding up hourly rates, is what I was looking for, for different levels of service. But there's not like you can ever take any road and plug in, this road is so many hours of a surveyor, so many hours of research. So it's just a kind of a comparison. So if you add up Devenardos for the six items, you know, that's the land survey, the research, one-man crew, two-man crew, drafting and prints, it's $560, and DuBois &amp; King, $530. We got to remember, DuBois &amp; King Associates has no travel time, they're five minutes, they're right here in town. DuBois &amp; King will be an hour to get here. So in the long run, we'd be paying a lot more. So I have to look at it, and I know, you know, I talked to, Chuck and I both looked at it, and we both feel strongly that, you know, Devenardo, because they've got basically as many surveys as anybody's gotten in this town, they've got probably the most, some of the required from other surveying companies, they bought. Obviously, there's some on file in Town Clerk's Office, but not, in the past, not every survey was required to be filed in Town Clerk's Office. So look at all that, we feel our best bet is to go along with the Devenardo Associates, and just slowly pick away at this. Let's, you know, especially concentrate on the projects we've got coming up first. So for example, you know, if there's a water line work, well, it could be water sewer, it doesn't matter at all, it's part of the town. Water line work on a certain town, let's do the right-of-way, so we know the water line's going to be installed in that right-of-way. You can't go by the tax maps, and even the tax map has a note not to be used as a survey. Devenardo's been involved in our tax map, so in the long run, if you give us enough time, we'll end up with a good data document of all the right-of-ways, and then later on, possibly, you know, all the surveys could be plopped inside of that, and we could end up, might take 10 years, but with a real good set of tax maps that you can say the right-of-ways are shown accurately. But that cannot happen now. And, you know, Mike Ives will be gone at some point, you know, all will be gone. Surveyors are disappearing. I know there's probably five, or three in Springfield that'll be gone in the next five years, retired. Joe hopefully will be around for another 20. But eventually, you might be looking at down the road, if no surveys replace these guys, it's different than electricians and plumbers and carpenters. You got local peoples that can fill in, even though they're sparse. Surveying, you may have corporate, large corporate companies from Texas coming in to do this work, and it's not going to be the same, you know, the same level of service. So again, my recommendation there is to go with Devenardo Associates, you know, at the above rates, through the end of June, just $10,000 through the end of June, and then next year with the $15,000 through '21, and then continue with the, you know, we look at it year by year, we put it in the budget every year, so the stockholder would be seeing it. But it would, it'd be a multi-year process, you know, there's no way, I even asked Joe, I said, you know, could you quote this? He goes, absolutely, there's no way of quoting a project like this.
Right, so the motion is just to contract with Devenardo, with the rates listed, through the end of June 2021.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that the town of Rockingham contract with Devenardo Associates for the right-of-way work at the rates listed in the RFP through the end of June 2021.
I'll sign it.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussions, questions?
That was one thing. All I can say is, if Ellen is in the background listening, Ellen, thanks for all the years worth of, 30 years worth of documents you've got upstairs put together, there's tremendous amount of assets in those. And we have not thrown them away yet.
And we won't.
I know we won't.
We will, motion been made and seconded to go with Devenardo, the right-of-way bid process. All those in favor would signify by saying aye.
Peter, aye.
Susan, aye.
Ben, aye.
Gaetano, aye.
Stefan, aye.
Motion passes, go with Devenardo Sons, right-of-way, order to be, thank you.
All right, yeah, thanks.
We are skipping sidewalks, we're skipping number three, number four, so we have some appointments to do. Item five will be on. So I guess we'll go through the list here. The information in the packets wasn't super up to date, so I think some of that's been edited. If anyone has any questions or notes of anyone that's missing or should be taken off, anyone find anything? Okay. Do we have a couple?
Do you want me to, yeah. I suggest that on the, for the committees, like the Recreation Committee, for example, where we have general members of the public on them, that we advertise for those, for those boards, you can always appoint people... You can always appoint people now and then appoint more people later, but, but I think it would be helpful for the community in general to know that there's openings and that we're interested, and we have not done that advertising. So that's one comment. One, the one appointment that I would like you to make tonight is to appoint Sean McGinnis as the Emergency Management Director. I did that in, before we had a chance to have a meeting. That was, Ron Lake was the Emergency Management Director, but I'd just like a confirmation of, of that appointment. That's important now. There's nothing else that is, for me, necessary to be done immediately. There may be something, someone else.
Right, but that is an appointment that's normally done by the select board, right? So.
Uh, it is, it is. But I, but I can do it in absence of the select board, and we needed one. Or was that, did I get your question wrong? I'm sorry.
Well, no, point is, it's an appointment that's done by the select board. I would feel that if we had needed one in the, in the situation, whatever situation, that the select board would have had the courtesy of being, being notified. I wasn't notified. And that the select board retained the authority and not delegate the authority to appoint somebody to that.
Okay, I should have notified you. You didn't delegate the authority, but.
Nope.
But I, but that's part of my job is to, as necessary, act on the select board's behalf when it's necessary.
Well, I don't know how the rest of the select board feels, but this select board member will act on behalf at his discretion.
Okay, and we can talk about that when Ray comes also. But I would request that you.
Yes, sir.
Should, just a point of emphasis, the union negotiation represent beyond this was somewhere, I, I was appointed before it made happen here. I don't know if that's not on the list, I didn't know if we need that on there, are we willing to stay on there?
I don't know, is that normally on these?
Well, it doesn't come up until we get into negotiations, and that's every three years, that's why I haven't been on there. Probably three years ago it was on there.
I'm in favor of you staying on there as well, as you've already started. That's, that's my opinion. I don't know if it's on here, if you'd like us to put it on here, I'm sure we could.
Sure, and you can make that part, you can make one motion for that appointment and the emergency director if you want.
And you want to review any other questions, like Sue, are you interested in the Chamber of Commerce position?
Yeah, I can stay on those committees and, and then at this point until, unless there's somebody wanting to that. The Wyndham Regional, I can stay on that, but if there's somebody else in the community who wants to step up, we can, I can obviously resign and they can be appointed later. But just for the, for, because we are, Wyndham Regional is getting very involved with what's happening with COVID-19, so it's good, I think, to keep the consistency at least for now.
Okay.
The other thing is the Town Service Officer, I think we should appoint that, Christine Bullard, because she may be getting involved as things go on with this as well.
Yep.
I'm assuming she's still interested.
She's already been helping in the COVID-19, so I'm going to say yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, yes, sir.
So on the tax, Town Tax Stabilization Committee, it says five people and mid-year. We had added Pat Fowler.
It was four, one, two, three, four.
Right, but in the.
Oh, you want five?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's, it's the statute, regulations have this, five people on it.
Okay.
And Pat Fowler is the one who was appointed in session.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we, we need one motion, do we need, put them all in one motion for these new appointments, or want to go down through the line here?
I think one would be fine, but, but let's, let's say them all clearly so that you know what you're voting on. Do you want me to make a stab at it?
Sure.
The, the ones I have are Town Service Officer, Christine Bullard.
What's, we need a motion for that? Someone want to make a motion?
Well, if I just list them all, then, I mean, I think that would be easier, if I list them and then you say, motion as submitted. Okay, so Christine Bullard as Town Service Officer. Susan Hammond as Wyndham Regional Commission.
And also Bonnie North.
Oh, and Bonnie North. Peter Golick as Union Negotiation Representative. The Town Tax Stabilization Committee with the existing members plus Pat Fowler, Sean McGinnis as the Emergency Management Coordinator.
Susan for the chamber, a little further down.
Oh, sorry, and Susan for the cham, Susan Hammond.
Then everyone else listed that's interested is where, we're sure they're interested in being appointed.
I, those are people who Rebecca contacted, yes, that, who are in the interested column.
Okay, so like.
Chairman, I notice my name's not in the interest, but I did send an email in about positions I currently hold, and I wanted to stay on those.
And didn't, we received an email of?
We, yeah, Doreen Aldridge as Recreation Committee, yeah. I, I just, I didn't want to get too confused with doing many, so maybe we should just do individual motions if you want to do that. I was trying to speed it along.
It's okay, we got to be accurate.
Yeah.
But all the ones that, that are just listed as interested, we need, we need to confirm that these folks, you're, you're saying that Rebecca's contacted them and they're interested?
Correct, some, right.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll just go right down to the last.
Yeah, go ahead, start with the Town Service.
Well, you got one above it with an interested one. We must just do them and get them done while we can.
Yep.
Uh, motion to approve Peter Bergstrom as the Energy Coordinator for the Town of Rockingham.
I'll second it.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Peter, aye.
Susan, aye.
Ben, aye.
Gaetano, aye.
Stefan, aye.
Motion passes, appoint Peter Bergstrom as the Energy Coordinator. Next.
Can I just let you know, just one informational thing? If it's going to be a unanimous vote, if it is a unanimous vote, you don't need to do a voice vote, even with people on the phone. I, I've learned more about the law, they sent out information today. So you can just say all in favor, signify by saying aye, and if it's all, if it's unanimous one way or the other, you don't have to do a voice vote.
I see, yeah.
What if, not, not in this case, but if one was opposed, we would go to a voice vote?
Exactly.
Copy, thank you.
Uh, motion to appoint Christine Bullard as the Town Service Officer for the Town of Rockingham.
You hear a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, appoint Christine Bullard, Town Service Officer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion passes. Next. Just, just while we're headed down the thing, constable's empty. I do believe we have planned to run an ad, is there an ad? We're looking to fill that position. Perhaps limited.
We'll let people know that it's vacant, but it's not the kind of thing that anyone can do. It's very specific requirements.
True, but it's, it's important people know that it's open and we're looking for candidates, qualified candidates.
Yeah.
As of right now, we have none. Next.
Sue, you want to do the Conservation Commission? Notice there's a couple missing that had been on it and.
And it may be just that Rebecca was not able to contact them. But, but it doesn't mean that you wouldn't necessarily appoint them, you can appoint these folks now and the others later.
Uh, make the motion to appoint Mike Gia, Tom Hernan, Peter Bergstrom, Devin Smith, and Laurel Green to the Conservation Commission for the Town of Rockingham.
Seconded, aye.
Motion been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Constable Skip, Development Corporation.
I'm fine with staying on.
Okay. Peter?
Yeah, I'm sticking on those, yeah.
Okay. Need a motion?
Motion to appoint Peter Golick and Susan Hammond to the Bills Falls Area Development Corporation.
Is second?
No, second.
Motion been made and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes. Recreation Committee.
Yeah, I'm, I can stay on that one.
Me too.
I know we didn't have a meeting.
We talked about that earlier, we talked about setting up a time where we can all meet. I guess there was two that we couldn't make because, whatever, so I think it's important we try to.
Yeah, no, we should definitely try to.
Get together.
And we're going to have Doreen Aldridge there also.
Yep, she, she would like to be on, on the committee.
Okay. Entertained a motion?
This chairman, I move that we appoint Doreen Aldridge, Helen Howard, Ben Lucio, Gaetano, Putigano, Heather Murphy Hicks, and Megan Alpate to the Recreation Committee.
Second.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I was using the Personnel Policy Committee with Union Negotiations as the same appointment, so you can do Peter for that, Peter Golick.
Okay. Uh, motion to appoint Peter Golick to the Personnel Policy Committee and Union Negotiations.
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded, appoint Peter, Personnel Policy, Union Negotiations Representative. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Was this one, was there, were we sure about the solid waste management?
Yeah, that's, um, the Solid Waste Management District, so Gary DeRosa is the primary and I'm the backup.
Okay.
Uh, motion to appoint Gary DeRosa and the Municipal Manager to the Southern Windsor Wyndham County Solid Waste Management District.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving along, Wyndham Regional Commission.
Uh, motion to appoint Susan Hammond and Bonnie North to the Wyndham Regional Commission.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Revolving Loan Fund Committee, it's continued on the next page, and I believe all those names are accurate. Entertained a motion.
This chairman, I move that we appoint Kenny DeBarn, Peter Golick, Nathan Martin, Hugh Hagerty, Gary Gaetano, Putigano, Gary Fox is a non-boarding member to the Revolving Loan Fund.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the Revolving Loan Fund Committee, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next.
If you want to do tax stabilization, it would be those folks plus Pat Fowler.
Okay. Uh, motion to appoint Tim Powers, Richard Stickney, Tom Hernan, Dennis Hardy, and Pat Fowler to the Town Tax Stabilization Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, Town Tax Stabilization Committee, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Uh, motion to appoint Fire Chief Sean McGinnis as the Emergency Management Coordinator for the Town of Rockingham.
Second. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for new Emergency Management Coordinator. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Forest Fire Warden, appointed.
Yeah, because you don't have to do that, I'm sorry.
He's good, that's, goes till 2021.
Yep.
Cass Wright has been appointed as the Animal Control Officer at our last meeting. Next one would be Sexon of Town-Owned Cemeteries, we have the name.
Uh, motion to appoint Jay Malcolm Potter and the Municipal Manager as Sexon of Town-owned Cemeteries.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next one, it's been appointed, ADA Coordinator, so we have Historic Preservation Review Commission. All these names interested are accurate.
As far as I know, yes, sir, yes.
Uh, motion to appoint Miles Mickel, John Letman, Fred Tipton, Annie Guyon, and Marguerite Janison to the Rockingham Historic Preservation Review Commission.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No action necessary, Waypoint Committee is inactive, Chamber of Commerce Representative.
Uh, motion to appoint Susan Hammond to the Greater Falls Regional Chamber of Commerce as a representative.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Sue, is, um, have you guys been meeting pretty regularly?
We have been, yeah.
Is it?
They've been meeting, I, I haven't had a chance to catch all the meetings since my travels.
The chamber is closed right now? Chamber is closed as well?
Yeah.
I heard that.
They are.
Thank you, Green Up Day Chair.
Uh, motion to appoint Guy Payne and Amy Hallett to the Green Up Day Chair.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, the Green Up Day Chair. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Rockingham Senior Center Representative.
Uh, motion to appoint Hugh Hagerty to the Rockingham Senior Center Representative.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We have Connecticut River Joint Commissions.
Be good for both of them? I guess so, for now.
But they're interested?
I, I don't know, I think.
Don't know.
I mean, you have some other appointments, so we could wait on the last, well, I, I do know that there were some folks who expect, on the Opera House Committee who expressed interest, but we haven't talked to all of them, so we can wait on those appointments.
The last two?
Yes.
Okay. And? Anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Sounds good. I think we already did.
We did at the last meeting.
Okay.
Wait, wait, the pound keeper? We did, we skipped that, didn't we?
Um, we have a contract for that, but I thought we did it last time, but you can go ahead and do it.
Yeah, let's do that.
Um, it's the, um.
Yep, ready?
Yep, motion to appoint the Wyndham County Humane Society as the pound keeper. But I have a question on that.
Motion been made and seconded, I, we have a question here. Yes, sir.
I was, I heard that they are sold out to someone else.
Um, I don't know, Cass might know, I mean, we have a contract with them and we did confirm that they're willing to continue.
I'm on their regular mailing list, I've been getting their recent emails. I haven't spotted anything about a change in ownership or management, and I can tell you for a fact, they're still taking dollars.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's under new management. Don't call me, but.
Contract's good till when?
I think it's three years, I think we have two more years, but I, I don't know for sure, I can let you know.
I'm, I'm pretty sure, quote unquote positively, but I'm pretty sure the staff, the working staff there is still the same.
Okay, great, cool. Uh, so a question was, they're maybe under new management, but we have a contract. Motion's been made and seconded to appoint Wyndham County Humane Society as a pound keeper. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? All right, I think we have them all met. So... We're skipping six, we, attorney's not here, so we didn't get those at the organizational meeting. And we're skipping seven, so that puts us at reviewing items for the next Select Board meeting, April 7th, 2020. Anybody have any, what, what do we have right now?
Um, what we have so far, continued appointments, but much fewer than I expected. Access permit for Forrest, I guess Everett's not here. There's another access permit that wasn't finished for this one, for this meeting. Um, and then Gary. Um, and then Gary will have two grant applications, and all, I mean, that's assuming that we'll still be meeting, um, you know, in, in full mode.
Will we, um, is a sidewalk evaluation something that's, we, we need to hear, or it's just not time sensitive? Why would you?
Um, it's not, it's not time sensitive, but, um, it's a presentation showing you the condition of the sidewalks.
Or tentatively put that on there, seeing where we're at on April?
Yeah, and actually many, when I made this list, I wasn't anticipating all of the, um, postponements, so yes, actually, you're right. The policies and procedures ought to be here, the overview of select board duties.
Sorry.
No, that's, all, all of the things that we postponed should be here.
So for those members of the select board, do we want and, to hear an update from the fire equipment committee? Because there was discussion at our last two, uh, two select board meetings ago that we were gonna kind of wait to see what the fire committee thought.
Right.
Pertaining.
Right, it was.
Is it, has something been?
I think the, the concerns have been resolved. Um, it was essentially the, the bottles for Rockingham Fire. And the concerns with those have been resolved. The chief can speak to it if he'd like.
Do you guys hear that?
Yep.
Yep.
Remember, we had that discussion, so that situation has been resolved, we're hearing? Tax sale discussion?
So we have to go to approve the expenditure for them, for the bottle on April 7th?
I don't think so.
Yeah, that's why.
I think they figured out something.
Yeah, interdepartmental cooperation.
Interdepartmental cooperation.
Alright.
Do we want to tax sale discussion? I think it could be summarized with an email after discussing it with the manager earlier. People are interested in just getting an updated email with where we're at. Stefan, you often ask about that as well?
Yeah, I'm curious as to where it was. I remember you talked about finance, going for some educational.
Right, and they did, and she did. Um, so the discussion today was just gonna be an update of, of where we are, um, in the process, which is about.
So would an email suffice for folks, or does anyone want it on the agenda?
Works amazing.
Me too.
Okay, great.
Um, and then hopefully Ray can be here and we'll wrap up code of ethics, rules of procedure, overview, uh, the select board duties.
Tax sales discussion?
So that's what we just talked about, Peter, and, um, manager believes it could be summarized in an email. We could get an update to where they're at with an email. If you don't like that option, we, we could put it on the agenda, but I think they plan.
No problem.
Okay? That's okay? All right?
Yep.
Anything else for April 7th meeting?
That's it for me.
Okay, uh, moving on to the joint board meeting, March 31st.
Yeah, actually, I'm sorry. This isn't for the April 7th, but just to have it in your heads, um, April 21st or May 5th, one of those two meetings, assuming that V-Trans doesn't change its schedule. Um, they want to come and do a presentation of plans to redo, there's a bridge on Missing Link that goes over the railroad tracks.
Was it number 38? Bridge 38?
I don't know the number.
I have that email.
Um, but they sent an email, and the, the dates that work in their current schedule, the dates of our meetings that work in their current schedule to give them time to advertise are the 21st or May 5th. Um, so what they would do, it's about a 40-minute presentation, they said, so we could schedule it to be before the regular meeting if you want. Um, the preliminary design does increase the width of the bridge to accommodate, um, bike lanes and, and sidewalks. So that's just a heads up. You don't have to make.
And sidewalks?
I think so. I think it's, isn't it sidewalks?
I know.
I get, I have.
Well, it's definitely bike lanes. It's definitely wider because it's very.
Oh, it's good. It's pretty narrow now.
It's very narrow now.
So that would be either on the 21st.
April 21st or May 5th, but I, I do, that was before the COVID, so I expect everybody's schedules to be pushed back.
Okay. Anything else?
No, not for that one.
Anything else from the board here for the March 31st joint board meeting? What, what's on there so far?
We have personnel policies. Um, we have automated vehicle testing on town streets. Now, the trustees already saw that presentation. Um, so they weren't real excited about seeing it again at their meeting. Um, but, uh, but it, but there's, there's no rush on that. The, the town, um, V-Trans doesn't even have the application, uh, prepared yet for towns to ask for the testing to be, uh, in their jurisdictions. So that doesn't have to be the 31st, but we just did have it on the 31st, so I'm mentioning it. Um, and then, uh, VCRD, uh, Vermont Council on Rural Development, the folks who did the community visit, um, they would like to do a, a brief presentation. Um, they have a report that summarizes the visit, and so they'd like to do that on the 31st. Again, assuming we can have a meeting.
Um. Okay. Review and approve orders, bills, and warrants?
Motion to approve the orders, bills, and warrants.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to review and approve orders, bills, and warrants. All those signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any other business?
This chairman.
Yes, sir.
I know there's, um, some, uh, discussion of having people mail their taxes and water payments in, uh, something that might require a policy change. Uh, are we experiencing or attempting to accommodate people that say are day or two late? Uh, the mail is slow for somebody or another, that they don't get penalized because the, uh, payment doesn't arrive on the due date that it's supposed to be, and the town taxes do the tenth. But the, uh, village water and sewer, I don't know about those. That's, that's their issue.
I think that's a great question. I, what would it take to, uh, change?
I think you just need a, a couple sentence amendment to the current policy to that, uh, in, in emergency situations, such as the COVID-19 issue.
So a postmark perhaps would suffice, a postmark date? I, I think that should be the normal anyways. If someone, just like the IRS, if you sent your payment in before the due date to the post office, I don't think you should be hit with, uh, penalties and interest. If it, they ship it up to White River, it spins around and goes from that post office to this town hall and takes four days. That's my, that's my, my opinion.
I know there's an issue about, uh, penalty interest on taxes, uh, been extended 90 days now past April 15th, 17th deadline.
I know, that's a great question. I don't know if I have the answer.
Why didn't you make a motion to, um, direct staff in this, uh, because of the COVID-19, to use the postmark date as the, um, uh, receive date, but just, but make it particular to, to this situation?
For property tax.
Uh, for, you could say for payments of, uh, water, sewer, and property tax.
We don't have.
Utilities and.
Oh, that's not you guys. Right, right, right. For property tax, yeah.
So we may be out of the restriction by the 10th when the tax, contacts are due, but.
Hopefully.
No.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, uh, to temporarily, because of the current situation, um, approve the postma, postmark date on your property tax during this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
And we'll have to add that to the April 7th, won't we, to ratify?
Good point. Yep. Yep. Or whenever you next meet.
April 7th. Good, yeah. Anything, Sue? Other business?
No, I thought, thank God.
Sir?
I'm not sure.
Can I share that information?
I think, I think that's why, I think it should be shared.
Would you like to? So I just received an email. We have the reformer here. Some folks probably saw the, um, article. Just received an email, um, from the principal at the Bellas Falls Middle School saying the staff member that received has received the results of the precautionary tests and the results are negative? Okay, great. I, I'm, I'm stating it for those at home. Um, just received that, that, that faculty members' results are negative.
Good.
Yeah.
I just have one thing.
Sure, Stefan?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, uh, you know, it's, maybe it's going out of stretch here, but we're in an elected position. We represent a bunch of people in this community, and ultimately, we're all American citizens, and seeing what's going on with this Wuhan virus, now the Co, or Coran 19, or whatever you want to call it, um, it's caused a lot of people, and it's going to cause some people in this state and in this country and in this community, in this village and town, a huge inconvenience, not to mention, uh, you know, trying to find childcare or, uh, other items, finances, et cetera. Um, New Hampshire, I just sent a email before we got in here. I mentioned that the governor had a couple of proclamations about, uh, uh, late payment on such as taxes, rents, uh, utilities, et cetera. Um, so I think that's great. I'm hoping that Vermont will follow, and, uh, again, going out of stretch, um, I think the Chinese Communist government ought to reimburse the United States of America and the state of Vermont, and specifically the town of Rockingham and Village Bellas Falls for any, uh, inconvenience or expect damages.
Well, we'll, we'll keep it in our little district for now. Thank you, Stefan. I would add some things, too, but I just feel, you know, right, we opened the meeting approving 16 liquor licenses, and as of 2:00 today, 13 of those businesses aren't open tomorrow. So the economic impact here, and I think, um, what we've always done in a community is come together. I just would ask if the Emergency Management Committee has been, we, we talked about volunteers and Greater Falls connections, but are we also working on a plan for, uh, what we could do in the next phase as far as simple, people needing meals and such? Is that, is it, is there information?
Yes. I think, I think you're gonna talk businesses, but. Yeah, um, we are. Um, obviously, first, we're focusing on what we're responsible for as the two governments. That's, that's our top priority, and we have to um, make sure we have continuity of our operations. Um, but then we also want to make sure that people and businesses get the help they need. So with the businesses, we're, um, last week, actually, I sent out information from the state ACCTD department, because they're the coordinator of state aid. Since then, federal aid, um, looks like it will be available, but I'm sure they'll coordinate that, too. So businesses should, um, uh, contact the state, and I can send you that information. The chamber has it. Uh, we asked that they distribute it to their, um, members. But, uh, there are businesses that aren't chamber members, so we want you to have that information, too. Um, as and one thing I would just wanted to add for businesses, I just received a letter that I shared with the members who are here. Sorry, Susan and Peter. Um, it's, uh, the North American Retail Hardware Association is suggesting that local, state, and federal governments consider locally operated, or locally owned, I think they say, um, hardware stores as essential businesses, and I think that's, makes some sense. So, um, I haven't read it entirely, but if the folks who are here can read it, and let me know if you have any objections, and I'll send it to the two who are on the, on the phone. Um, it just, that makes sense to me, um, because they do have products that we need at this time. And then for community relief, um, we want to be a support organization, not the organizers of, of that effort, because that's not what we specialize in, and there are other organizations, and we don't want to duplicate efforts. So Gary Fox is coordinating that, um, but, uh, people can certainly contact us, but, uh, Greater Falls is a, a better place for them to contact. And thanks to everyone who has volunteered, because people have called here to see, to see what they can do, which is really encouraging.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you all, and there will be no executive session tonight. Uh, we'd entertain a, uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much. Good night.